Okay. The meeting of the meeting is, the meeting will be held via video call and in line to discuss the following matter. Discuss the removal in regard of the Christopher Columbus statue. And the, and the historical commission and the Chelsea Arts and Commission shall place on their agendas to collaborate and discuss the replacing of said statue. With a memorial for original additionist inhabitants of Chelsea to remember their place in Chelsea's history. We also have a matter that will later be on, later discussed, and that is to accept the provisions of Mass General Law sixty, subject or. Three F for the purpose of creating a veterans assistance fund and operating such fund in full accordance with the statue. Officials invited to attend the subcommittee, city manager Tom Aberzino, members of the city council, Francisco Toro, head of Chelsea Veterans Piers. Members of the public, the members of the Chelsea Arts and Cultural Commission, and members of the Chelsea Historical Commission. I will now take a role. Naomi Zabat, present. Judith Garcia.
Present.
Todd Taylor, absent. Giovanni Cupro, Leo Robinson.
Yeah.
Calvin Brown is on his way, will be late. Damali Vidal.
Present.
Melinda Maldonado. Ymir Rodriguez.
Here.
Roya Visioneta, present. Enya Lopez.
Present.
Seven currently present and a couple on their way. Okay. So let me begin by, as one of the. Co-signers of the order, I don't have the order in front, please, but that's fine. I think also there was Damali Vidal. Judith Garcia. Melinda Vega, Naomi Zabat, Enya Lopez, and also, I believe, Ymir Rodriguez signed on. The purpose was at least, I'll just speak to myself and then I'll allow the other co-signers discuss. It was to. Review the fact that we have the statue of Christopher Columbus in. Our Chelsea Square. One, that it's a controversial figure, but more importantly. My eyes didn't feel like an association with the history of Chelsea. And also felt that there was a lack of anything in Chelsea to allude. To that early history of the city of Chelsea, whether it's Samuel Maverick or the natives that were here prior to, including the Winnetka tribe. So that was the genesis of my reason behind the order. And I wanted to allow members of the Historical Commission and the Arts and Cultural Commission who would probably decide what anything may look like. If we do were to replace it, to also offer them, and I think that would be the bodies that would. Be part of the process and get their thoughts before I relegated to them what they had on their opinion. So I'll now allow my co-signers to speak if they'd like by raising a hand if you want to talk about this before we open it up to the. Non-signers or those who are on the Historical Commission, if you'd like to raise your hand and speak on this, any of the co-signers. Who. Put this measure in front of the city council. No one? Okay. Is there any of my colleagues here?
Melinda has joined the meeting.
Councilor Cupro.
Okay. This is an interesting situation we have. One, we want to honor Native Americans, yes, I agree with you. We should honor them too. But don't get rid of your past, embrace your past, because your past will lead you to your future. There's always been, the thing is, the poor immigrants, they're Latino immigrants, the hard-working Latino immigrants. They spent all their money to put this statue, which has been there seventy-five years. Not only it had been there seventy-five years, I asked a lot of my constituents, which are Latino, which my own family is Native American. And they're all different kinds, I asked them all, and really, what they want to do is, they like the history. Maybe their history is not specifically told how it was done, but it's still their history and it's still their heritage. And that statue is the only Latino statue you have. There's no other Latino statue. Why, you want to get rid of something that's been there and was done by the hard-working people? That they paid, the city never gave them any money, the city never did anything, you don't even know the statue's there. I asked ninety percent of the people, don't know it's there, it's always covered, I didn't even know it was there. So you have something that was done by Hispanics, why do you want to get rid of the Latino culture and the Hispanic culture? It's part of you, don't get rid of it, embrace it, be proud of it. Yes, maybe Columbus wasn't the greatest, as they say, but he did the greatest thing. He brought us all here, without him, you wouldn't have the rest of the culture that we have today. So why are you going to get rid of it? And not only that, here's something else about Columbus, if you know your history. Columbus came, he only landed in two places, he never went to anywhere in America, he only landed in the islands. Then when he brought the Native Americans back to Spain, he didn't like the way they treated them. He thought it was a bad thing what they did to them, and they locked them up. So in other words, you want to get rid of someone, yes, it's all fault that he discovered this country. And he made Europeans come here, if that's the case, the pilgrims did the same thing, they came here, they were friends to them. Monks, they made a treaty with Massa Soid, and at the end, they killed them all and took everything. So if that's the case, get rid of the pilgrims, why? Our history is already here, teach it, embrace it, and show the next generation not to do what happened, but to also have to happen. And why do you want to get rid of a Latin statue? It's a Latin culture, go to East Boston, all my life, I've seen what it done, and there was always Italians. For the last ten years or eight years, I've seen every Hispanic culture, every Latino culture, go to East Boston, and it's proud of it. If you take that away, you're taking their heritage, your own heritage. If you're part Latino or whatever kind you are, you want to get rid of your own heritage, why? Why do you see any Latinos feet on it to get rid of it? Why? What Latinos do you see up here, coming up here saying, I hate Columbus, he was the worst thing? Columbus wasn't the worst thing that happened, he wasn't a conquistador, he was an explorer. He explored and he found this country or this land, which he wasn't the only one, there was a bunch of them, they came here. They get rid of John Cadman, get rid of Ramon Tama Gris, get rid of Ramon Rico's future, get rid of somehow, get rid of everything. Why do you want to get rid of your past? Embrace it, make it better, that's what you have to do. And don't get rid of your Latin culture, why? Why? Do you see any Latinos feet here and say, I want to get rid of it? Where are they? Do you see any in this room? You don't see any here that want to get rid of it? My children have Native American heritage, they're Indian Indians, and they, they either, my children have. That's what they, my grandchildren, all Guatemalan, Andorians, Salvadoran, Ecuadorian, Colombians, Dominicans. Jews, and I asked them all, I said, do you want to get rid of the statue? For one, they didn't even know it existed. For two, they said, ask, they asked me a simple question, Grandpa, why should I get rid of it? And I said, because they say he was a bad guy. He goes, how is he bad? He said, well, he got, he wiped out all the Indians. And I told him, he didn't wipe out the Indians, all the Native Americans, the conquistadors came, but that's in every culture. You name me a culture, and that's happening today, today, right now, the Russians were took from here and killed people to take it over. That, people from Israel kill Palestinians, they're stolen. Everybody does it. People from Somalia kill Somalis, or the southern Somalis, all for what? Human beings can't change, when someone tries to conquer, that's what I, that's what conquering is, but Columbus wasn't a conqueror. He was an explorer, and he gave us, well, I'm here, anybody that's in this land that's of any kind of heritage, not just Hispanic, any heritage. It's part of it, if it wasn't for him, you wouldn't be here, what would you be? You'd be in Europe. So how can you blame someone for you being here? You can't, and it's five hundred years of history, and that statue was there seventy-five years. And you ask the people in Chelsea, they don't even know it exists, and it was paid by the sweat and blood of those poor Hispanics, Latino immigrants, they put it there. So do you want to put a statue of a Native American? Certainly, I'm in favor of it, put it, it deserves to be there too, put it next to it. And see both sides and say, this is and this is it, honor them both, boom. Get rid of one and put the other, honor them both and show both us, and make the future generation of our children understand.
Clarification.
Huh?
I want to ask a quick clarification on two different types. You've said Latinos have paid for that statue.
Yeah. A guy named Armando Diaz, he paid for it. What was he?
I'm confused because I'm getting emails that it was not Latinos who paid for that statue.
Then you tell the Chelsea record and the Historical Society that they were wrong, a guy named Armando Diaz paid for it. So who was Armando Diaz?
Knights of Columbus.
Knights of Columbus.
Knights of Columbus.
No, there was plenty more, I can show you the Chelsea record, that the Chelsea record lied, the Knights of Columbus is not even Latinos, the Knights of Columbus. But there was part of it, a guy named Armando Diaz, he was part of it.
There are people here from the Knights that'll speak, I guess.
Was it the end guy, but it wasn't gentlemen, they?
So I might, I want to, there's a clarification, I don't think, as you stated, that Latinos paid for that statue.
That was Armando Diaz.
You're talking about one guy, that's not.
It was part of the committee that did it, it wasn't very many that did it, it were Latinos, what is it times, what are they, and they're a part of the Latino race? What are they, what are they considered? They're not considered Latinos?
So if I, so you're telling me that Italian-Americans and Italians consider themselves Latinos?
Yes, they do, they were the original Latin, what do they consider themselves, what are they?
I beg to differ, sir.
Why, why do you beg to differ?
I, I.
What are they part of?
Um, can anybody hear me?
Europeans.
They're part of what?
They consider themselves Europeans.
Well, you're talking two different things now. What is a Latino?
Well, I'm.
What is a Latino to you?
I'm clarifying your comment.
They consider themselves, they consider themselves Latin. That's what they consider themselves, you talk to one Italian, you're telling him he's a Latin, he doesn't tell you he's an Anglo-Saxon.
I'm, anyway, I'm sorry.
They're Europeans, as you say, right? So your ancestors came from Europe, and what are you? You're Hispanic Latino, right? Where do your ancestors came from?
Europe.
So you're Latino?
Well, my parents were born in Argentina, they consider themselves Latino.
Oh, but you just said.
You said ancestors, you have ancestors.
But see what you said, you're Latino, because.
Well, this is not about me and you right now.
Well, I know it's not, it's about all these, well, in East Boston, each year, you go see the, the Columbus Day Parade? Do you see what's there each year? I see it each year, I go and look at it, when it comes, it's full of Native Americans, it's, every kind is represented. Before, there was none, in this part of the world, there was very few Latinos. The only ones were the kinds, as you said, Latinos, but my children are Latinos themselves, they're Native Americans, they can say they're Native Americans. If they're Indian Indians, that's what they are, they're Native Americans, and they don't want to get rid of it.
Okay.
Why, any other Hispanics that come up here that want to get rid of it?
We'll talk about who talks to us and whoever, everyone has, I guess, hears different things, so.
Why, my honest thinking, go get rid of it, embrace it, put another one next to it.
Understood. Councilor Vidal.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I appreciate the passionate conversation around Christopher Columbus, and no one is trying to take away anything from my colleague's history. And his identity with the original, with, with, with his Latin American roots. But I just want to make sure that we stay on topic, and so I'm gonna just focus on the statue for now. Since I was born, since I remember my earliest memory of being in school, Christopher Columbus discovered America. And he came here and there was this, he was this guy dressed in colonial clothes, and I remember coloring little turkeys and Native Americans with feather hats. This is what we have been taught, but the fact of the matter is that you can't discover a land that was already occupied by the original land dwellers. Also, if we're going to depict statues in our community, and I understand what you're saying, Councilor Cupro. About your Latin identity, but my Latin identity, my Afro-Caribbean roots, like when I think about where I come from. My people, my ancestors' lives were absolutely ruined by the colonizers that came to this land. So if we're gonna have a statue in Chelsea Square in front of a police station, as we're beautifying this community. It should be something that exemplifies a diversity of this community and not a colonizer that, that raped, that pillaged. That exploited natural resources and actually committed genocide on the original land dwellers. So, yes, it's history, so let's put them somewhere, I don't, we can't erase history, but it's just not an accurate depiction of the, of. Our history, our collective history, of the reality of this country. Maybe your history, and that's okay, so let's find somewhere else where we could put that statue. But I think that if we're going to celebrate something and have something at the forefront in the center of our city, it should be something that embodies our values. And not that depicts genocide or rape or the killing of Native American people. My apologies, but there was a lot of damage caused at the hands of this explorer that wasn't a conquistador according to you, that came to this country. Discovering a land that was already occupied, I think, I think it sets a bad example. And as we're going to continue to move forward and try to undo four hundred and sixty-five years in the making of systemic inequities. That I think starts with starting to depict characters that represent our values. That's all I'll say on that for now, thank you, Council President.
Councilor Lee Robinson.
Actually, the statue was not by the police station, it's right across from where the Knights of Columbus used to be, and actually. Those history buffs, the statue used to be right out here in front of City Hall, it was originally moved down to where presently is located right now. All I want to say to correct the record.
I see that we have a member of the Historical Commission, Allison Unio. And I'd like to invite her to speak and provide some thoughts of what this council is proposing. And give us some, what your opinion is of a possible process of removing. The Columbus statue or something that is more relevant to the history of Chelsea.
Oh, thank you, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. So I think, first of all, I think that one of the most important steps that we would have to take in terms of our decision moving forward. Maybe we should back up a little bit and I can explain my, you know, my background. I've been on the Historical Commission for about two years now, I'm the chair. And I have a background in many of these issues, my PhD from Boston University is actually from, in cultural heritage management. So these types of issues are not unique to Chelsea, they're national issues, they're international issues. And the way in which things are playing out now has revived a lot of these types of discussions on a local level. So one of the first things I think is most important is better understanding public opinion about the situation. So all of Chelsea, I understand that they, I'm not, it's totally clear about how this initiative was inspired. I do know that there is a change.org position online right now that has about seven hundred signatures or so. And that really just calls for removal, it doesn't really discuss what we're going to do, say, after removal may move forward. But one of the things that I think, you know, beyond just getting a better sense of public opinion and how we go about that is, I think, something the subcommittee could discuss, what avenues are available to us. Are potential legal matters that we may want to figure out before rendering a decision. Many of these types of statues have been put up by private organizations and individuals with funds. And those funds have been used to establish a trust, a legal trust of some sort, to be able to continue the maintenance and care of the statue. So that might be something that needs to be investigated first, is that if there was a legal trust set up for the care of the statue. Any decisions that are made about how this statue is going to be treated needs to be put forth to that trust first for approval. The second part of that, though, is ownership of the land on which the statue sits. So we, you know, and I understand, I think that it's city, if it's city property. And it would be that most likely the trust made a agreement, if there is a trust. Or the people who funded the statue made an agreement with the city, and the city is either donating or leasing land to allow the statue to sit. So that would be another piece of investigation that we would need to understand, is that relationship between the donators of the statue. Their original intent for that statue, and then what is that relationship, who's in charge of the land that it sits? Ultimately, whoever is the landlord, you know, owner of this piece of property, they get to decide whether or not that statue gets to sit there or not. So, fine, we make a decision about whether to take the statue down and move it or do something with it or keep it there. If we decide to, to remove it from this place, the next step of this process is we got to figure out where this thing's gonna go. Because. Councilor Cupro was right, people paid for this statue. And the Knights of Columbus has paid for this statue, so we should give that option, should we choose to remove. To the original people that donated to create this thing. An option to figure out if they would like to take it back and put it on their own property. So that's something that is another step that needs to be investigated, is that should we decide to move it? Who's gonna take it? Because ultimately, most likely what is not going to happen, I don't think that this is something anyone wants, is that this statue is destroyed. That we, we, we completely eliminate it. That opens up a lot of other, a lot of other issues, so I feel like a very diplomatic method would be to have. Another entity come in and take ownership of it and put it on their property. And then that opens up other questions, who's going to pay for that? How will it be done? Who will take it? Et cetera. I will clarify and say that very unlikely, you know, a lot of people have been talking about other statues around the country that, you know, we can take them down, we can put them in museums or something, or Historical Societies can take them, but. To be very frank, many of these institutions don't have the money to care for these things. So I think that we should be realistic and write that off as an option, that we can donate it to a museum or something or, or the likes, because. There are those institutions, both private and government-funded, in terms of historical protection and museums and the like, don't have the money, they're underfunded. So let's say we move forward and removal goes, goes forth, okay? I think that when it comes to getting out what public opinion means, we have to figure out what motivated these individuals who donated the money to the statue were hoping to accomplish. And, you know, we're talking about the late nineteen thirties, as I understand this was put up. And many of the funders, and I went by, I looked at it today to see who the sponsors were, Knights of Columbus, many Italian-Americans. You know, Christopher Columbus and many of these statues that are dedicated to him were meant to commemorate Italian-American heritage in some way. And he's one of the most visible and known Italian-Americans or Italians. To make a mark here in, in North America. And so I think that one of the debates that have come out in these statue discussions is how we commemorate these, these grander ideas, these big ideas. And, and, you know, maybe a solution, you know, by removing a Christopher Columbus statue, I think it's important to highlight that. It's not like a knock against Italian-American heritage, there are so many other Italian-Americans that we can honor instead. That have done better things than what Columbus has done. And maybe a, a solution is a replacement that could be funded either by the Knights of Columbus or something, or the community. That replaces the void that would be made by removing Christopher Columbus, something that honors Italian-American heritage. Because I think that's where one of the big pushes against this removal and removing Christopher Columbus in general is going to, to create. And I think, you know, and then there are other reasons why we commemorate Christopher Columbus, it, you know, he symbolizes immigration of new people coming to America. And that's, again, a nice thing that Chelsea as a city reflects in its rich culture and diversity. Is that immigrants have come and made this city what it is. But then again, Christopher Columbus isn't necessarily a good symbol of that idea, so we can certainly come up with another alternative to that, right? And think about too, I think that Councilor Damali said this as well, is that. By putting up and say commemorating Christopher Columbus or putting up a statue that commemorates immigrants, there has, it's, it makes louder. The absence of any commemoration of Native Americans, original inhabitants to this land. So that's another consideration that we should think about, is that sure, if we want to, you know, highlight immigrants, or we want to highlight Native Americans, you know, let's, let's think about all the different pieces of Chelsea that are being amplified or being. Hidden away or not amplified as much. So when we think about what we're going to do after, so we take the step and say we do want to remove, and then what we're going to put up after. That's another step of, we need to reach out to the public. And hear their thoughts about what should come in next. So I know that's kind of a lot. And I hope that if anyone has any questions, I would say as, and that's just me speaking from my hat as my experience. And my background in this type of work actively, in terms of a Historical Commission position as chair. As I understand it, if it's a privately funded statue, piece of property that is sitting on city property, because it was privately funded and probably is. Then technically private ownership, the Historical Commission wouldn't necessarily be able to say, have any say in how the statue is treated. Meaning where it gets moved, who takes ownership of it, what, you know, what we're gonna do with it. But we would, I think, and I would have to have legal counsel be able to clarify this, have a say about whether or not it should be allowed on city property. And so I can't render opinion on that without a consensus from the other members of the Historical Commission. So that's all I have for now.
I'm going to recognize Councilor Naomi Zabat and then Malene Jennings.
Thank you, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to reiterate one more time that I am in support of the removal of the statue. I don't have anything particular to add besides what has already been said about why I feel that it should be removed. Except to say that it is more than just a physical removal of something, it is a symbol. That we as a city are. that we as a city are behind the movement that is taking place throughout the United States today in terms of recognizing how to be sensitive to all of the residents of the community. And if in fact, there are people, and there are many people, I am sure, who don't even know or did not know that the statue was there. If there is one person who did know, and did notice the statue was there, and it affected them profoundly, then that is, that's the important part of this whole thing. So speaking as somebody who is neither Native American nor Italian, I am not proud to, to have that statue in my city because of what it symbolizes in terms of the genocide and everything that took place after Christopher Columbus landed wherever he lived. And so, to that point, once again, I just wanted to say that I am in support of removing the statue and replacing it with something that would be fitting of the ideology and the belief system and the compassion that exists here in Chelsea, and that we could be a model for the entire nation in, in replacing it with something that is meaningful and is more representative of, of us in this city, and what we care about, and how we feel towards humanity as a whole. That's all, thank you.
Ms. Marlene Jennings, thank you for patiently waiting. Hold on. Can you hear me? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, great, thank you. Well, I, I appreciate being invited this evening, and I find it very interesting. I did write something that I submitted, and I, I will read it to you. I have to say, I agree with all of you on many levels. But let me just read this, what I wrote, and then perhaps I could make a few more comments, brief comments. "I agree that many of the events after the discovery of America are difficult to read and accept. The abuses of indigenous people are horrific on all levels, but taking down a statue does not change the history of what happened. It was dedicated on October 12th in 1938, and by reading the names chiseled on the sides of these, of these sides, it was established by many Italian-American residents who were probably also immigrants. No doubt, many of them were immigrants, as that time Chelsea was and continues to be a marvelous melting pot and entry into the life of America. Clearly, there was much interest in this sculpture, as the names of many are proudly, proudly chiseled on the sides, including the Sons of Italy Lodge, mentioning both the Ladies Lodge and the Chillicothe Girls Lodge. This clearly was a monument of pride for these people and reflects an enthusiastic community spirit. This monument was meant as a source of pride and endurance to their history. We stand on the shoulders of those who have come before us, some of it good, and some we would rather not talk about, but it is part of who we are. If the statue is taken down, what would happen to it? Would it be destroyed or moved to another location? Would that change the history of what happened? What would we put in its place? I support the effort to create a new memorial or plaque to honor the memory of the sacrifice of the Native Americans who lived here during the settlement in this land." The other thing I think about, if Christopher Columbus didn't come here and find this world, who else would have? How different would that history have been? We don't know, we really don't know. But I, I strongly believe that we cannot erase history. And I understand there is a move afoot in this country to do that. I don't agree with it, I think we need to learn from it and to never have it happen again. Thank you.
I think, what I think, what I'd ask is, I, I want to appreciate what some of the comments by Allison and brought up some relevant questions to the process. So, I'm, the city manager is here, and I'd like to ask him regarding, you know, and I don't know if you've, if you've bothered to do any research yet, or if the city solicitor has bothered, do I know, very busy with a lot of other items. But there was a, a question as to, you know, was there a trust set up on this? And if there's a contract, and, you know, given it's almost, you know, 80 years since this happened, you know, if there's a, a maintenance agreement and so forth that would be looked at. But, I don't know if we would have that relevant information, I see Leo's raising his hand, but I just, first I'll ask you those questions. Would we be able to access those records? Obviously we would if we needed to go forward, but do you think that there's anything that the city would still have on record regarding any of those, you know, agreements, possible agreements, or points made up, points brought up rather, by Ms. Allison?
So, I would say that neither I nor the city solicitor has done any research on this. But I would be very surprised if we could find a single document on this matter. I mean, given the, given how much time has passed since this statue was first erected, I doubt we're going to be able to put our hands on any documentation that's gonna shed any light on the situation. My sense is that it's probably was simply accepted by the city and put on covered property, and there is not any documentation. But I could be wrong, I just think it's unlikely, just my experience on trying to research things that go back this far in municipal government, both here and in Revere, is that putting your hands on documents is almost impossible.
Counselor Lee Robinson, no, I'd say there are two gentlemen from the Knights of Columbus. I hear waiting to speak, might be able to shed some light on how the statue got put in city square. I know at one time, statues would be right on hand or across the floor. They might be able to clear up some of the questions that we have to discuss. So why don't you go get them? In the meanwhile, I'm gonna recognize Allison, and I see you had your hand up, so I'll, I'll let Allison say another few words, because I saw she had her question up.
I think just a point of clarification when it comes to what I've seen with many of these types of statues, especially Christopher Columbus ones. This is a relatively small memorial, so it very well could be that the way in which legally this was done was, as Tom had said, that it was donated to the city, or donated, and the city accepted the responsibility of putting it on the property, and then allowed it to just be self-maintained, meaning the sponsors would, if that needed be, the ones that have to take on the responsibility of, of caring for the statue and doing that. And in, if that's the case, and if there is a decision to move forward with removal, then I believe the way the process works is that legally the city should be contacting the main benef, uh, donators of funds, so that would be Knights of Columbus or the like, and ask them what they would like to be done with the property, meaning the statue and the plinth, et cetera. And they might have records in their own system that discusses this donation, so that might be a point of contact to reach out, the city can notify them that there is a potential need to move the statue, and if they would like to take ownership of it. So that would need to be offered to them, should this be removed from public land. That's all I had to say.
Yes, we have a guest, could you please identify yourself and then?
Yes, my name is Ernie Korea, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm here, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a former, longtime resident of Chelsea. And I've been a member of the Chelsea Knights of Columbus for 45-plus years. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the council, but I was a graduate of Chelsea High School, and I have to, just because I was from Chelsea, you know, I'm not in Chelsea now, I live in Saguas, but you can't take Chelsea out of the, out of the city. You can take, sit the kid, the guy out of Chelsea, but you can't take Chelsea out of the, out of the individual. So, I have to speak, and having said that, I'm here because I have to say, I am adamantly opposed, and we, the Knights of Columbus, are adamantly opposed to having the, the statue of Christopher Columbus taken down. Full disclosure, my grandfather's name is on the statue, someone had asked earlier about that. Frank V. Korea immigrated from Italy in the early 1900s, and his name is on the statue. And I have a list of all the other people, I remember there was a conversation really of all the people who, whose names are on the statue, I can read them off later at some point. Because the Sons of Italy were there, they helped out, they helped move it from here, because it was right outside this building. It was moved from here down to Chelsea with the assistance of the Sons of Italy. So, I, just to stay on that track, I'm a proud second-generation American, okay? My parents, my grandfather, the members of the Knights. And I, I feel it's important to, to remove the statue, it would be erasing history, it would be erasing American history, or even missing, erasing Chelsea's history. Chelsea has a history of, of welcoming immigrants of all kinds, it's not limited to anyone. They have a diverse, diverse population here. And I think this, it's important that everybody realizes that this statue was given and donated as a gift. It was a gift from a bunch of people, and I can read their names here, there's multiple societies, there's multiple people on that statue, there's gotta be at least 25 to 35 names on the statue, as well as other organizations, and I can read them because I have photos online, if you think that's important. But it was installed, think about it, it was installed during the Depression. These were guys who were going out, and families were going out, and they're doing the same thing that the people who live in Chelsea now are doing, they're doing a job, they're going to work, they're trying to get by. So, as, as a member of the Knights, we, we discuss this, and we, we agree, the Knights agreed that a proposal that was mentioned at a previous meeting, that rather than taking it down, let's, let's turn it into, maybe call it an immigrant pot, come up with some kind of a monument or something else that could commemorate Native Americans, all of the kinds of, you know, this, this, Chelsea has a rich history, there's Polish, American, Jewish. This is, this is what Chelsea, this is Chelsea's history. And I think we're cutting ourselves short if this thing is removed. In addition, you know, it would serve to honor all these immigrants and enhance Chelsea's diverse background, and act, you'd have an accurate history of what's going on. I know that, these, these are crazy times we're living in, there's no question about that. And I'm not saying anything about that, but if we, if the project to build a, and I just refer to it as immigrant pot, because I think it should cover the whole broad spectrum, that, you know, it would, it would, if it was collaboratively planned and thought about by multiple types of people, you know, it would, it would have enhanced what Chelsea is, it would mend some past wounds. It would let people talk, and you would be able to educate, this is talking about education. So, the citizens of Chelsea have to be educated, especially the young kids coming up. So, you know, given the trend in our country, which is kind, we're in, we're in a very fluctuating spot where it is, you don't, my opinion is, don't tear anything else down. If you tear it down, you, you know, you have to build it up, you don't tear it, you gotta compromise. Please, you some, I urge you to consider not to remove it, because I, I feel like removal is like destruction, and it, and it's divisive. I, it won't build a, it won't build any community harmony, it won't, you know, it won't accomplish things, it tears things down. I urge, you know, take this, we have to take this opportunity, it's, it's about Chelsea's future, to listen to each other's concerns, and start a dialogue, please don't remove it. It's part of Chelsea's history, it's part of American history. I have to get, I wanna make a quote, and it was made by George Santana, although that's not his Spanish name. He came, he was an immigrant from, from, from Spain, educated in the United States, 1800s. And he's the one who quoted, and I'm gonna give two different versions of this because I don't know if I have the right one, to be honest with you. Those who do not learn from history are doomed to report it, uh, repeat it, excuse me. And the other one is, those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it. So, please, take a moment to think about, just, just the term history, if you can take a second. It's his story, history, H-I-S, his story. Think about it, think of whom writes history, it's the victors, it's the ones in power, it's, it's those who are in charge. So, they're the ones who put the spin on what is printed, and what is remembered, and what is taught. So, I have to, so now, we, and I'm saying we because it's the Chelsea Council and everybody else who can, who wants to be heard on this matter, and the more the merrier, I feel, we're the history, we're tomorrow's historians. So, think about, you know, 1938, think about 2038. What's gonna happen when the next one, someone, someone else says, oh, what did those people do? How are we gonna evaluate that 20 years from now, 30 years from now, 100 years from now? But, if I could just briefly give you a, a history of the Knights of Columbus, because I think it's important. Everyone's talking about what he did, or what he didn't do, but it was a Catholic organization that was founded by Father Michael J. McGivney. And the spiritual foundation or the framework of our organization was charity, unity, and fraternity. It was designed to provide financial assistance to widows and orphans. And they were all immigrants, by primarily immigrants, who were seeking, who were seeking a new life in America. And think about this, this is, this is in, it was established in, oh, yeah, 18, 1882. This is before there was any social nets, where there was any food pantries, where people depended upon each other, and the Catholic Church stepped in to do that. So, I just, just, it also, it's, it's important to know that the Chelsea Council, the Chelsea Knights of Columbus, '83, the charter was granted on December 17th, 1983. So, within 10 years, 13 years, or whatever it is, we were, we were one of the first councils in the country. There are over thou, hundreds of thousands now, I don't know about hundreds, but there's quite a few around the world, all right? Just briefly, another member of the Knights of Columbus, President John F. Kennedy. He had his, anything he did was for social justice and a lot, a lot of things, not anything, but I'm just saying that. Just a couple of other things to point out. Over the years, the Knights of Columbus has been opposed to many things that are not right. They opposed the Ku Klux Klan in the 20s and 30s. They supported civil rights, and they still support civil rights now. They welcomed all ages, as a matter of fact, the United States, and I'm just gonna throw a couple of these side things in here. In 19, well, 1961, when they had the March of Washington, and Martin Luther King, I'm not sure if that's the right year, I think it was 61 or 63, when he spoke on the, on the steps of, of the Washington Memorial, the United States, excuse me, the Knights of Columbus donated $25,000 to blacks to stay in hotels during that period. This continues today. W.D. DeBois, he published, he published a book, he was the father, this is before the NAACP was established, he published a book, the United, the Knights of Columbus were the ones who, who supported it and backed it, and they're still, we, we are still doing this today, I don't say the Chelsea Council, I'm saying the National Council, okay? So, during World War I, all right? The, the, the Knights of Columbus opened up a welcome center, and outside the welcome center says, "All are welcome, all is free," okay? Finally, I have, just to come closer to home, to Chelsea, because we've been around here for a long time. I, it's, it's important to know what, what we do here, or what we have done. Over the years, Chelsea opened up the Council in 1908 after the Chelsea Fire to provide support. Over the years, Chelsea opened up the council in nineteen oh eight after the Chelsea fire to provide support for people who needed, uh, support after, well, this section here, William St. Rose was possibly burned down and going that way. They supported that. Each year, we sponsor a golf tournament, okay? And the proceeds of that golf tournament go to different things, scholarships, helping people who need insurance. Uh, and anybody in need can, you know, we, we help out a lot of people, especially the churches. We donated over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Our Lady of Grace Church, and we built a wall. This is going back a couple of years after, after we sold the council that we had. So a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars went to that. We make donations to the food pantry in Chelsea, okay? We've, you know, we, we used to have the Tootsie Roll Drive. Our membership now is a lot of people have moved out of, out of the city, so we're not as active as we used to be, but we used to have the Tootsie Roll Drive. The reason, some of the proceeds for that, and that was, the Tootsie Roll Drive was, was for special needs or handicap people. And, uh, one of the things that we did with that was, we installed a chairlift for a resident in Chelsea whose child was in a wheelchair. So we installed it outside their house. But, you know, I, I've gone on long enough to your consideration, but what, what I'm saying is, we, we like the idea of having an immigrant park, if that's what it is, as opposed to ripping down. We wanna, we wanna keep, we want things to get better, we don't wanna get things worse. When we rip things down, things get worse, that might be my personal opinion, but, uh, and as a, as a consideration, if, if we, this proposal to build such a park is a collaborative effort, we, as a council, would, uh, bring up at a future meeting for the members to vote on, uh, to make a donation, all right? And that, of course, that's dependent upon the majority of the meeting members approving it, but we're throwing out the olive branch here, please bring things back. I, I urge, I'm gonna leave this here, this, we, we have a monthly, uh, we have a monthly, uh, book, it's called Columbia. This is the one that just came out, and I made a copy of, uh, seven or eight pages, and I, I only have one copy, and I'll leave it with the president or with, if, if you could each please read this. This covers what happened since our organization started, numerous donations. We are here to help, it's a fraternal organization, and it's, it's, it's something that I'm, I'm proud that we have been a member for forty-five years. My father was a member, my grandfather was a member, his name is on the statue. And again, please build, make comedy, don't make things worse. Thank you, God bless us, God bless America, and God bless Chelsea.
Mr. Korea, I'm gonna, you know, say a few things.
Yep.
Um, my understanding, my interpretation of the Christopher Columbus statues, where they are placed, is primarily that they've been, um, put up by, as you say, Italian immigrants and, uh, second generation, third generation Italian Americans. Um, it seems to coincide with, not the Depression as much as it was, like many immigrants before them, was criticized, they were not well received. And a lot of, you know, derogatory remarks were made towards Italians as it came, and we know what they are. Yeah, oh yeah, at least, we know what they were. Um, and it seemed that to combat the, the tide of the, the bad press that they were getting and some of the hateful negative language that was, you know, thrown their way, that they used this statue as a, in an Italian community, Italian-American communities, where there are strong Italian communities, that this statue was placed. You don't find this statue in all cities and towns across the country, but primarily where there is a group of enough Italian Americans to do that.
Right.
You agree?
Yep.
So I think that we can agree to that.
Yep.
So, um, I originally stated that it didn't seem that the statue of Columbus in Chelsea had particular relevance to the history of Chelsea itself. Because if you really go back, you know, he was the explorer hired by the Spanish.
Right.
And the Spanish end territories is mostly at best south of the United States. This northern side of the United States was primarily English settlements in his, history there. So the relevance of Columbus in particular to this particular city, this particular region, this particular part of the country isn't, but if not for the fact that we had Italians immigrate to this city and put that up, you offer saying, hey, Chelsea is an immigrant community, maybe we should do something as a, you know, uh, you know, a compromise, make it an immigration park, which, you know what, sounds great. I mean, we've had waves after wave of immigrants come to this city. French, Amer- French Amer- I mean, French, uh, Canadian, Russian, Jewish, now, I mean, Puerto Rican, now we have Central Americans, it all. And maybe we do something to harmonize that along with maybe something historical to this time, to this, this part, whether it be Samuel Maverick or the Indians that were here. I don't think this community.
I'm sorry?
I don't think this community, Chelsea, has enough space to even think about putting a statue up for every single nation of immigrants that has come across here. Whether it be French-American, whether it be Mexican, whether it be a Salvadorian, every single body would wanna have their own space, if that's the case. So I ask, if this statue is not only a statue of somebody who is now reviewed, maybe not the best choice, but is also really the symbol of, of trying to combat what was back then the negative of the Italian, why wouldn't it be divisive if we say, we're gonna create an immigrant park that shares the history of the city for all immigrants who came, but we leave the Italian one up? Why is the Italian statue left up and not all the other countries that have come in and each one has their own piece of the pie? Versus saying, you know what, we're part of the whole group, no one is better than the other? Because I think that in a way, there's an argument that right now, today, there are Salvadorians living in this community that like the Italians before them, you know, are being slurred at. They talked about the mob, they're talking about, you know, MX-13. Why not we have a Salvadorian say, hey, you know what, we're gonna put a statue somewhere in Chelsea because we wanna fight the bad press, and we're gonna put someone, and, you know, is that right? To say, to combat the bad press that this group is getting, we're gonna, because there's a strong enough entity in Chelsea, and there's enough, I bet you, I'm not even a Salvadorian, but I bet you, if I went around to the Salvadorian community and say, hey, let's kick up a, you know, let's do a Kickstarter and raise money to put a statue in a square, I could probably do it. And I'm sure there's enough support to do it, because there's enough pressure on the city council to kind of accept it at this point, given the strength of that community at this point. But does that actually make sense? Is that, you know, all, you know, I know that, you know, is it fair to everybody to say, we're gonna do an immigrant park, but we're not gonna touch, you know, Columbus, who A, really has no relevance to the history of Chelsea, and isn't the best symbol for immigration, but really it's because the Italian community is, that's our guy. But at the same time, we'd say, we can't put a statue for Simon Bolivar, and I can name a half dozen others. I, it, it doesn't make sense to us. It's, so you, yeah.
Tom, Columbus was Italian, it wasn't only, Columbus's name is Christopher Cologne, that's his name, his name is Christopher Cologne.
So I, I, I guess what we're trying to say here is, we're looking for a compromise, we're looking for dialogue. We're looking for some way that people can come together. It, in my opinion, this fall, when, when we rip things down, you, you, you're trying to erase history. I mean, you're trying, you're trying to, uh, get rid of a certain thing because of the present dialogue. It, it's, it's, it's a step where, you know, if, if the people could come together, sit down, talk about it, maybe, I don't know what the answer is in terms of, I mean, you make a valid point, you know? But, but the statue for the Knights of Columbus is, is a pretty high document, uh, statue. There's, there's all of the names on there, and I, by the way, I can give you the names of the other people if you'd like, I, I have photo of them. But it's, it's, it's a way to bring people together, to have a dialogue. This ripping it down, look what it's done in other places. I mean, there's all kinds of statues being ripped down, they're being painted, they're being burned, this, it, it's a violent act. Not so much removing it, which is, I'm glad there was a conversation about removing it, and I hope it doesn't get removed. I, and that's my, that's my original premise, or our, I, I say, my, I'm talking about the Knights, you know, but sit down, and it, it, it's, there's multiple people, it's like your meetings here, somebody has to, someone has to throw out an olive branch, maybe, if that's what it is, I don't know, um, you know? Um, sounds will be dope.
Um, I just, I wanna thank the gentleman from the Knights of, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I wanna thank the gentleman from the Knights of Columbus, um, that is here. I grew up at the Knights of Columbus with my best friend, so I know all the work that you all do with the golf tournaments. Huh?
I didn't understand you, I'm sorry.
I said, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments and the work of the Knights of Columbus. I grew up at the Knights of Columbus with my best friend, the Lanzillos. Um, and so I'm familiar with a lot of the work that you've done. Um, and, and, and I, like, it's a part of my youth and I, and I really appreciate it, so I just wanted to say that. But I do take issue when we say that defacing these statues nowadays is violent. And the reason why they're being defaced is because of the violent acts inflicted to Black and people of color. And so I grew up with a bunch of friends that were Italian, and I can understand that there being a sense of connection between Christopher Columbus and celebrating the Italian culture. But I take issue with the fact that this is the gentleman, that the Italian community is choosing to represent them. Because the person that you want to glorify and celebrate is rooted in the genocide and enslavement and rape and disease of people that look like me, that look like the vast majority of this community. And so I, I, it is just, just this community, it's just that wrong is wrong. I mean, I don't want a Puerto Rican, as proud as I am of my Puerto Rican culture, I don't want us to put a statue up of a Puerto Rican guy, as proud as I'd be, if he's known to have raped, who admitted, because Christopher Columbus, there's documents after documents and historians where he wrote a letter to Doña Juana de la Torre, saying that he was enslaving and nine and ten-year-old girls and selling them into sex slavery. Is this who you want to really be the face of the Italian community? I just feel that we could do way better. Um, and I think that, look, the people that came before us, they got it wrong. They got it before, like, I am so proud of a lot of, of, of our ancestors, but a lot of them got it wrong, and we have an opportunity to get it right. And so I'm just saying, well, I, with full respect to the Italian history, I just want to make sure that how can we do it in a way where we can commemorate the culture, but that we're not triggering systemic trauma and, and, and oppression that Christopher Columbus caused? So how do we move forward from this? How do we, because comment, I don't understand how you mitigate oppression. I don't understand how you mitigate or come to a common ground on murder and, and this kind of thing. So I just, I, I, I really want to figure out, yeah, we'd love to come to a common ground, but I can't see one where we're glorifying the statue that represents so much damage and so much violence.
Um, Allison?
I think, um, just another, I, I'm, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the Historical Commission, I'm speaking individually right now. I think one thing that we need to keep in mind is that statues are not history. They're representations of memory, and memory is how we want to either elevate or ignore facts of the past. By removing a statue, that doesn't mean that history is gone, we still are learning it in many ways. We're not ignoring these books that are being taught in school, we still have Wikipedia. Columbus is not being erased and his memory and legacy are not gone, both good and bad. One of the problems we have with these statues now is that we attempt to use individuals, people who are flawed, to represent bigger, grander ideas than ourselves individually. And memory, because it evolves over time, at the time that this statue was put up, Christopher Columbus was an appropriate symbol, and there are good things about what he did in the sense that, as an Italian-American symbol, he united a group of people that were marginalized in America at that time. However, because memory changes, we know more now about what Columbus did, especially many of the negative aspects of what he did and their impact on why our society is the way today, because of what we're learning through the past. And with that full knowledge, you need to accept whether or not you want to have Columbus symbolized, Columbus as the person, both his good and negative aspects, be in public space in government-owned property. And by doing so, allowing that to remain on government property, that means that what he did, both good and bad, are a reflection of the government themselves and the, the, basically the citizenry of that, that space. So I think that's something to keep in mind. I would argue that there are probably other symbols other than Columbus that can be used to embody those original intents of the people that put this statue up. The good things that the Knights of Columbus and the Sons of, of Italy have done. The concept of a melting pot America, you know, there are other things we can do. And I would say that, in addition, these removals, and I wanna say that this is a good thing, that we're actually having this conversation, unlike other cities have done it wrong, where they just have come in in the middle of the night and just removed it. Whether it be Confederate statues, statues of individuals who were incredibly problematic and did terrible things. We're having this conversation, and that needs to happen. I think ultimately, it's going to have to come down to what the public opinion of the citizens of Chelsea feel about this statue, and specifically Christopher Columbus being on public property, if they're comfortable with that. And if they are not, then we should do what the citizens want and find a decision about how that can be changed and rectified. I think ultimately, what is going to have to happen, if removal does take place, and I'll reiterate this again, now that the, that we have representatives of the Knights of Columbus, there will probably have to be a conversation between the city and the people who donated, Knights of Columbus, Sons of Italy, about where the statue is going to go, because destruction, meaning destroying it, pulverizing it down to dust, that should not happen either. This is property that has been paid for, and so therefore, if the Knights of Columbus are willing, that could be an option where they take ownership of it and find another place for it, that could be an option. But I don't think that destruction is on the table at all. That's, and, and I, I'm not suggesting that that is even something that would even be a remote possibility. So ultimately, I think we need to remember, statues are meant to literally elevate in commemorating what they're, what they are. We are literally elevating Columbus in his totality, in all his aspects, good and bad. So we need to understand if we wanna accept that responsibility as a city. And then we need to think about whether or not he is, as an individual, the most appropriate symbol for what those ideas were and why he was put up in the first place. That's all I have to say.
No, thank you, Allison. Um, I wanna just talk about something, I know that we've gotten some emails, um, I just wanna say, read two. Um, well, I have Marlene's email right here, and then she's spoken, I also have Carl's, uh, he asked if, uh, he said he had a, uh, seven hundred and seventy-six signatures on change.org from Chelsea residents asking that if the statue be removed. Um, I'm gonna point to Damali, Damali, you've, you've been talking to Carl, can you? Can you give us the, now, just to give us a little feedback on that? I don't have a copy, I think there was a copy, but, uh, can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yeah, he just started a petition asking when he, I believe when he heard that there was an order that was put in about the statue coming down, he put in a, a petition asking for people to sign on if they wanted it to come down because it represented systemic oppression and everything that he wrote in that, in that letter. And he circulated it online and managed to get that many signatures. I don't know anything more than that.
Okay. Okay.
And I believe also, Mr. President, there was another letter that we received from a resident named Ariel Rodriguez that I, um, we received it like as soon as we went into, uh, break. I don't know if you remember that one, but anyway. And it was also in favor of taking it down.
Counselor Cooper?
Okay. Well, the first thing I'd like to say is, everybody says Christopher Columbus is an Italian, an Italian, Italian. You look back in history, there was no Italy. For another thing, his name is not Christopher Columbus. His name was actually, as you, it was written to the Spanish, his name was Cristobal Colón. For another, as they say, uh, back in the days when Columbus came here, and my fellow counselor says, he's Puerto Rican and he killed Puerto Ricans. Okay, my children are Puerto Ricans, I read a little bit about Puerto Rico. Puerto Rico was being invaded by natives themselves. The Caribbeanians used to go to Puerto Rico and, and, and kill people there, but that's not the issue. The issue is Columbus was not an Italian. There was no Italy. The Italians maybe adopted him as their own, but he was not Italian. He was a Genovese sailor, sailor or navigator. And the son history is saying that he was even Jewish. So nobody knows what Columbus is. And if you go to Spain, he's very well, there's statues all over the place about this gentleman. If you go there and you see him, I've been there, I have not seen him many times. You go to Dominican Republic, and they say where his bones were buried, that's where he died, where he got buried. And they're still telling me he's buried there. So he wasn't embedded in Italian history. He wasn't embedded in Latin history, or as Counselor Roy says, a Span, Spanish from Europe. He was there, and that history is part of every Latin American that's here. Everyone that has an Hispanic name is a descendant of them. So why do you want to get rid of everybody who symbolizes Columbus for the time? Maybe they took him because that's what they thought, but there was no Italy. Italy didn't exist. So Columbus can't say he was Italian because he wasn't. If you look at his birth record, it doesn't say gentleman Italy. It says gentleman, and his name is Cristobal Colón. That's one thing. And the next thing is, the Knights of Columbus, maybe it was an organization to help these poor immigrants. They didn't speak and they didn't understand, and they didn't know what to do. So they like, like Counselor Roy said, well, you better let the statue to everybody that came. But everybody that came here has a statue themselves. We are an embodiment, I'm an immigrant. My parents were immigrants. All, we are an embodiment of immigrants, ourselves, each one of us. Even Native Americans are immigrants. They can't state they came from this country. They came from Asia. They would just happen to be here before Columbus. They crossed the Bari Straits to come here. So we are all immigrants of this nation. He just happened to be one, the discoverer for the Europeans, discoverer. Counselor said, well, you can't discover something that was already here. Well, discovery is finding and showing someone else that you found it. That's what he did. He found it and he went back and he tried, but when he came here, he wasn't Italian. There was no Italy. His name was Cristobal Colón. So actually, you get, I keep hearing Italian, Italian, Italian. The Italians maybe took him for themselves because they had no other way. But he symbolizes all of Latin America, all the Spanish, all the descendants, us Spanish. That's what he did. He is actually, his son was the first governor of Puerto Rico.
Counselor Cooper? There, there was a, I, I'm not sure if you're listening, but the question on the table is, let's say he is, you know, a, 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 not a symbol, but he has history, or let's say we go with Spanish. Should, should he, should he, as the statue was stated earlier by Ms. Cunio, be elevated? Should he be the symbol? Should he be the one?
Of, symbol of whom?
Of, of immigration, of this, of the, of the Spanish, of Latinos, whatever. Should he be chosen as a symbol, given what we know today of his history? Should he be the one symbol for all of that? Or, or, or can we find something better? And that's the discussion. Can we find something better to symbolize, whether it's the, you know, the immigrant movement or the, or the history of the city of Chelsea? Can we find, if we're going to be, again, a sanctuary city welcoming, is that gentleman, knowing what we know today, the right symbol to be put on a statue and say, this is, his, what he was and his values are what we have today? Is he the right person?
But is that what?
No.
But is that what we have him for? Is he the symbol?
Yes.
Is that?
Yeah.
I don't look at him as the symbol. He doesn't represent my ancestry to say of immigration, he doesn't.
But you just said he did.
But no, he doesn't represent that as an immigrant. He represents all of the Spanish culture.
So, so.
Not just, Columbus wasn't Italian. What I keep hearing here, he represents the Italians.
So, Counselor Cooper? So should the Spanish choose him? If, what if the Spanish don't want to have him as the symbol of everything and choose somebody else?
I don't know if the Spanish want to have him or not, but I spoke to a lot of people. Earlier you said there's 700 signatures, there's 40,000 people here. 700 signatures is not even one percent of the population you have here. That's nothing. I spoke to a lot of Spanish people. If you explain to them, like my own children, all the Spanish culture, all of it, all of the Spanish culture, they're not just Puerto Ricans, the Salvadoranians, like you said, the Guatemalans, the Andonians, the Ecuadorians. That's the culture of my family, and they're all a family of immigrants. And I spoke to them, and I asked, I said, what do you think of getting rid of the statue? To me, they'll know what the answer says, where is the statue? The first thing they told me, they didn't even know it existed. For another one, they don't know, not in the body. You know, what, what does it stand for? The only thing they know of Columbus is that he discovered America. That's all they know. And then I asked them, and I said, I asked them a simple question, and I said, that's part of your heritage. They said to me, how was it part of my heritage? Because when he came here, there was no Italian, it was part of the Spanish heritage. So when you get rid, you say, do you want Columbus to stand for the Spanish, you know, for all the Spanish? Maybe not, but he was the one that brought all the culture of all the Spanish that are here. All the Latinos derived from him. Whatever he did, he wasn't a conquistador. He wasn't explorer.
I understand that.
Okay, so you want to, you want to put him and say, oh, well, do you want him to represent you? He's not representing me, he's not representing you. What he's representing is the past. The past, what happened back then, no, but it's not. So it's your race, it's past. You take him rid of him. Who are you going to put as a Latino? Someone that represents a Latino, who are you going to put?
Doesn't have to be, we're talking about immigrant, it can be an immigrant park.
Oh, but then, this country, what you have is, okay, then get rid of Columbus and I propose we put a Statue of Liberty there. That represents all the immigrants. So the city from the committee that's there, put a Statue of Liberty. Why not? That's the lane, when you come here to this country, the thing you see is a Statue of Liberty. Get rid of Columbus, okay? You want to put, put him away, put him away. Put a Statue of Liberty there, that represents all the immigrants.
Great idea.
Look, I'm in favor of that. For a, for a statue of.
Mister, Mister Korea?
Yes, I have a list of the different societies that contributed to that, um, statue that was dedicated in thirty, in thirty-eight. And there's just a couple of them. Giuseppe Garibaldi Society, Independent Italian-American Citizens. Ladies, I'm not sure with that. Ladies Auxiliary, some, that's kind of, uh, Italian-American Improvement Club, Mill Hill. Italian-Americans.
That's because they adopted him.
Was that?
They adopted, the Italians adopted Columbus, but he wasn't Italian.
So I'm going to, I see that Calvin Brown raised his hand. Calvin, are you ready to talk?
You're ready?
Uh, hold on.
Can you hear me?
Uh, we can hear you now.
Yeah, thank you, and I want to apologize, um, I get off work at five, I work in Boston, so I've been here for a while. I heard some very, um, very encouraging conversation. Um, when I voted with my colleague, um, Recupero, to have this meeting call, one of the things, uh, a few things that I wanted to, uh, find out. First of all, before we decided in an emotional, teenage steps to rip down any statue, I thought it was only fair that we have this discussion that we're having today that can bring some light on, um, the Christopher Columbus statue. Um, one of the things that I, um, asked that night, um, was, was there any public money, donated money? Um, who was responsible for this, um, statue? And should we be looking into, I'm speaking to our, um, historical, historical commissioners? Thank you, Marlene, um, Jennings, and Amy, um, Allison for being here uh, to enlighten us on your perspective. And also the gentleman, um, Mr. Korea, we, from the Knights of Columbus. Obviously, we look at the Knights of Columbus differently from what we see when we hear about the history of Christopher Columbus. But, um, as long as, so, because a lot of information has been discussed, and I think it's needed to be discussed. I think it's worthy to be discussed before we decide. Eleven members of the city council to make these things that we're going to remove something. On one hand, you hear that there's a 700-plus residents that say they want to remove. On another hand, you hear there's more residents than that in the city that potentially wanted to be, um, stayed in place. My question tonight, you know, after hearing some of the facts and hearing some of the history of this conversation, what we need to do is come up with a plan with, what are we going to do after we hear what we know? And we would be able to move forward to, um, removing it? Are we going to have the decision where 11 members that was elected to make that decision? Or we're going to actually really have some input? And as we have had with other, uh, emotional and also critical issues that come before our city? You know, the statue supports a lot of things, and a lot of things this statue supported. Some of them are good and some of them bad. When you look about what the immigrants wanted, um, some want a great statue, they didn't know the history of this person. It was, um, what they wanted to display. When you find out some of the history of Christopher Columbus and some of the things that he got away with, some of the things that he's done, some of the documents that have been proven, what he has done, whether it was then, you know, um, relationships with underage girls, having girls, raping good women, um, slavery, so on, all that. When that come out, obviously, people get emotional and say, oh, we, this is horrible. But how are we going to really teach our community to learn something from this? I think, um, we must come to a point that, you know, and I would grant, as Mr. Korea said also, that we did not rush to death, Ben, and just rip the statue down. Whether the statue come down or not, or whether it's stand, it has to be a learning process for our community. We have so many good things here in our community, and we just can't let one statue either be an eyesore or also be a Statue of Liberty for all. And I just think that, you know, the residents need to be more involved in this and realize what's going on and what we're complicating doing, and just let the residents have a voice in it. Um, again, um, just, I mean, he comes with a lot of information, but he still haven't said anything that I've heard today that said, who paid for this? I know he said there were donations made in light of different organizations, but if there's anyone on those names that he has that's living, or a family member that's living that we may all are dead if we decide to bring it down, I think we should be aware of it and, uh, bring it before us. Uh, but again, I think this conversation is moving in a relative way. I know my colleague, I'm speaking with him a lot, Recupero is passionate about it. And, uh, again, I, I just like hearing, um, the passion, and also, we have to also remember and we have to accept the fact, um, one of the statements, um, Mr. Korea was saying, that fail to learn from their history, they repeat it. We won't repeat what we now find out was typical and nature of Christopher Columbus. Do we want to repeat that by putting up another statue in smaller? Just if we decide we're going to remove it and put up another statue? So, um, I'm open for conversation. I think the Knights of Columbus, um, many of us had parties, birthday parties, yeah, but no one ever thought that it represented Christopher Columbus. They thought the statue, one image, and the Knights of Columbus was another. But I'm glad that we again had, um, Allison and, um, Mr. Korea, and also Mrs. Jennings here um, to give us some inside information on it also. So I'm so, thank you for being here, everyone. Lastly, Counselor? Yeah, you know, listening to the city manager, we have not, we don't have too much documentation on it. So we need to, to find out exactly what direction we go in it, whether it goes into, uh, making the decision at, at a public hearing or just within ourselves. We need to, we need to, and also understand what we're doing, what we, how we deal with it. Thank you.
I see that, uh, Counselor Melinda Vega is here, and I'm going to, she's calling in, she doesn't have a Zoom video, but, uh, I'm going to ask her, say if you were, that she texted me that she had something to say.
Hello.
Counselor Vega?
Hello. Good evening, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello, thank you. Um, I just wanted to take a moment to share my sentiments on the removal of the statue. And in Afro-Latina Puerto Rican, I am in support of the removal of the statue. I echo what many of my colleagues have already mentioned. Now is the time for us to take a stand against racism, colonization, and genocide of our ancestors. I do welcome the importance of getting our community members engaged in this conversation. But I can guarantee you, when they know his ugly truth, they would, and how he negatively impacted our culture and our history, they would agree. He can no longer glorify people that stand for that history, you know? Um, there's a quote that I want to mention, um, by Martin Luther King Jr. And he stated, "The ultimate measure of a person is not where one stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where one stands in times of challenge and controversy." So I'm challenging everyone to speak, to deepen their hearts and do what's right. Thank you.
Okay. Um, is there anyone else that wants to say any? I'm going to, we have another meeting after this, so, uh, I'm going to ask anyone who wants to have any last words. So I recognize, and I, and I'll defer first, I see your hand, uh, Counselor, uh, we don't, but I want to, uh, you know, we were joined here by Mr. Korea, and I appreciate him, so I'll ask you to, and you've been quiet for a little while, so, um, I don't know if you have any last words to, to, uh, to stay here, to the city council and the, the commissions that are listening?
Yeah, we just wanted, the Knights wanted to introduce ourselves again because I think we're getting a lot of negative publicity, and we didn't want that to happen. And the, the, the statues that were out here, the one that was right outside this window until it was moved down here by the, um, by, by the Sons of Italy, uh, that's our symbol. We don't, it, there's so much good that has been done by the Knights of Columbus. This was established as a capital organization, uh, and it continues to be done. And again, I'll leave this copy, I urge everyone, please read it. It's ongoing, it always has been, there's, it has been, we, we try to do help. We will look into this documentation, um, issue. Uh, and the other thing is, um, if you want the rest of the names that are on the statue, I'd be glad to email them to you if you think you need that, or else just go down and take a picture of them, because I have them on my phone. There's all kinds of society members here. The last one that I, the last one that I looked was the, uh, Amando Diaz Society, Chelsea Council, of course, Sons of Italy, Chelsea Lodge, I mean, there's, it goes on, and generosity of hundreds to others. This, this is done by a lot of people, so I don't know what impact that has on the historical society. Uh, and someone mentioned, you know, if there are any living. society, uh, and someone mentioned, you know, if there are any living, you know, relatives of the people on the statue, I guess, I raise my hand. My grandfather's name is on there, so I'm not sure what that means. We're, we're, we, we're making a point, we want to keep the statue, but we're also making the point, let's have an immigrant park, because I think that's just of what we need to do, we need to come together. There's so much division and diversion in our society and our country today, I think it's a good opportunity to have, uh, an all of friends to bring people together, and that's all, I, I respectfully thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak and.
No, I, I appreciate you coming on on a, I know it's a hot Monday night, and, uh, you know, I'm sure you had better and cooler things to do, but we appreciate you coming out and sharing the information with us.
Thank you.
Counselor Vito?
Um, I just want to say, uh, Mr. Korea, that I don't think that this is negative publicity for the Knights of Columbus, um, that I think.
It's not negative publicity for the Knights of Columbus, it's not geared to it.
Yeah, it's more so about what the statue represents, and so, that statue, uh, has, represents the disenfranchisement of a lot of folks, and I think that it's important that when we have this conversation, that we don't exclude anyone, so that we can kind of get it right. In, in the past, they got it wrong, how do we work together to get it right? I just want to echo what, um, Allison said earlier about, about, I'm not for pulverizing and knocking it down, I'm all for, we should not be glorifying that figure on our government property, I don't think, I think that that statue represents, um, a system that is rooted in white supremacy, where a lot of people were left behind, and I just want us to do the right thing moving forward. Um, I just, I'm not in favor of it staying erect on our taxpayer-funded property, so I, I, I trust that we'll be able to figure it out, and that we can put them somewhere that's not on government property, um, but I just wanted to make sure that I am for knocking it down, not for te, like pulverizing it, um, and I hope that we can do this collaboratively, um, but if the vote were in front of me right now, I'm absolutely voting for it to come down, and I just wanted to make sure to emphasize how adamant I am and, and steadfast in that opinion, thank you.
If I could just, there's, and, and the Knights of Columbus presently today around the world is a vehicle for bringing people together, making donations, publishing books, helping people, the Knights of Columbus is a fraternal charitable organization, thank you.
Counselor Recupero, keep it under two minutes.
Okay, I'm only gonna, I don't glorify Columbus, to me, he's just a part of history. He's the same as any other person, I don't go, I don't go between, uh, white supremacy, this supremacy, that supremacy, to me, he was just part of history. The world is full of supremacy, everybody wants to be better than somebody else, everybody wants to be ahead, if everybody thought they had a chance to, it would take over, they still do it to this day, but the issue is, you want to get rid of it, if you want to get rid of it, that's your choice, my honest opinion is, he doesn't represent, he represents, um, a way for me and my, my family and all of them to come to this nation, if there wasn't for someone like him to find it, that's the only thing he represents to me, that he gave millions and millions of people the opportunity to come to this nation, if he didn't find it, somebody else would have, but the point is, he found it, there might have been Native Americans here, he might have gained injustice to them, nobody's disputing whatever he did, nobody's disputing that, I'm not saying that he didn't, he probably did, but which culture doesn't, the whole point is, he brought my ancestors, not only the Italian ancestors, all my family that were here, all of us have something from him, they came here, maybe on, like Counselor Roy said, on this side, there was no Spanish culture, it was all English culture, Dutch culture, they were here, they came here themselves, they themselves were no different than Columbus was, they took and they looted and they took whatever they could find. So, what is the point I'm trying to make is, what do we want to do? Do we want to get rid of the statue? Fine, get rid of the statue, but how, are you gonna erase him? No, you're never gonna erase him, you're never gonna change what's there already, so why not the future, the generation, a hundred years from now, if you go back and look like we are doing now from seventy years ago, go back and say, what does this guy represent? What is the whole thing? Some of us might say, well, he was a killer, and some of us might say, he was an explorer, and the rest of them might say, well, if it wasn't for him, it wouldn't be here, but what did he actually have to do with racism? He was prejudiced himself for trying to help Native Americans, they were all bitter, the Spaniards didn't care that it discovered America for them and made them rich, they still made them dying to hell, so what is the whole point that we, we want to eliminate him, but can we eliminate him? Like the lady says, a statue is just a symbol, but can you erase it period? You cannot, you can't erase a statue, but not his, what he did, and isn't it better to learn and embrace, without your past, you could never find your future, because you're always gonna look back at your past to look at your future, because the wrong that you did in the past, you try to fix it in the future, so why not look at a symbol and say, okay, what is the good and the bad? Whatever we decide here, it's, whatever we decide, I can't stop the decision of other people, the only thing I can speak is for myself, and I believe that history can never be erased, no matter how you try to do it, the only thing you can do is fix it and make it better for the next generation, and if they don't know their past, they're never gonna know their future, and their past is always coming back in the future, thank you.
Counselor, uh, Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Counselor, um, Counselor brings up a nice, um, my good friend here, um, Recupero, he brings up a nice point, uh, and the point is, you probably don't, I'm gonna try to hit it from another angle, I mean, if we're gonna get rid of it, if we decide that's what the city's going to do, I think, um, Counselor Recupero also stated, um, earlier that a lot of folks that he spoke to were like, where is it, other than, um, discovering America? I think we'll do ourselves a disservice if we just get rid of it and don't explain to folks why it was there and why it was removed, I think it's an opportunity to share a lesson, to learn a lesson, and also to find out some history that was been buried. Uh, obviously, it's going to take folks that we have here, that from the Knights of Columbus, um, the Culture Council, folks to really dig into what it really means to be, um, a, you know, a Knights of Columbus member, and also why we need to importantly, about our cultural history, but I think we, if we just tear it down, or just, not tear it down, just remove it, come on, come up and say, what happened to that statue? And I think we owe it to our residents of Chelsea to let them know that there was, after discussion, after things that were brought to light, these are some of the things that we felt that was not inclusive to what the city of Chelsea believes and stand for, but these are some of the things that we want Chelsea to represent and learn from past, present, and future, so I think we should also consider that, and I think we probably need another meeting that we can actually let people know, um, that we are really seriously discussing this matter, um, one way or another, whether it's to remove it or whether it's to, uh, make it a park, thank you.
Um, Ms. Allison Julio, please.
Uh, I just want to finally say that the, as a, the Chair of the Chelsea Historical Commission, we are willing to assist in this decision-making process and lend guidance on how to move forward, specifically with how we make decisions about what monuments and symbols are presented on public property, so I want to just say that we're willing and able to assist with this process and hopefully console a community consensus out about how to move forward.
Okay. Um, with that, I'm gonna end that portion of the meeting, and we're gonna move on to the next part, uh, with the city manager, thank you, Mr. Korea.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, should I leave this?
Yes, please do, we'll leave that with the, and we're now going to, uh, talk to the city manager about the city, um, creating a Veterans Assistance Fund and operating such fund with according to statute, we have, um, head of Chelsea Veteran Affairs, Francisco. Thank you.
So if I could just set the stage for the President.
Thank you. Yep, Laura.
This, we actually had a meeting on this back in, I think, maybe the late winter before COVID did, and this was a presentation, this was a recommendation from me to create another one of these voluntary funds that residents support through a voluntary, uh, contribution typically at tax time, it's one of these things that the state allows you to include in the residential tax bill, and people can make a voluntary contribution. We have one such fund, the Community Scholarship Fund, it's raised above eight thousand dollars so far, and so if you adopt this, it would operate the very same way, it'd be a, uh, a donation in the, uh, tax bill, uh, they would both be included in the tax bill, and then one month, the third quarter bill, when we put a, uh, explanation of the tax bill, we'd have to alternate them, but on three of the four quarterly bills, both voluntary, uh, they'd be based on both funds, and what this fund does is it creates a discretionary fund to help veterans, and the difference between this fund and what the city typically does when you appropriate money is, uh, in the, most of the money that you appropriate, it's the, uh, the standards are governed by strict statutory requirements for qualification for veterans, so to get the Chapter 115 benefits, there are certain financial requirements that must be met, and if you don't meet them, you don't qualify, you don't get financial support from the city. Uh, however, this is a much more discretionary fund, it's up to the veteran agent to set out the qualifications, and so he can create qualifications that would allow for more veterans to qualify, so veterans who might not meet the statutory requirement for, uh, getting, uh, state aid as a veteran, because they just are above the financial eligibility threshold, even though they're still in need, they typically can't get any support, but with this discretionary fund, the veteran's agent would have the ability, he'd have some money to help out those people on a discretionary basis, and he's got a presentation as to how he would do it, and some of his ideas about how the fund would work, and so with that said, I'll turn it over to, uh, Veteran Service Agent, Francisco.
Good evening, uh, Francisco, well, uh, well, I recognize you to make some comments.
Thank you, Counselor, and I wanted to thank the city councils for giving the opportunity to make this presentation, Francisco Toro, I'm the Director of Veteran Services for the City of Chelsea, uh, pardon me if I sound a little muffled, but I'm trying to, you know, I don't, I'm not remote, so I have to wear this, uh, device here, so in short, um, we're referring to, uh, the presentations called the, the Veterans Relief Fund, and...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but is there a digital version of this packet?
She just got it, she's sending it out.
Okay.
We're working on that.
Thank you, sorry, Mr. Toro.
Probably shouldn't be sitting here, um, so...
Excuse you?
Sure.
Nope, nothing.
So should I wait till you, you can open it, or?
Okay, uh, hold on one second, she is, uh, we're working on it till they can have the, uh, view and see it at home.
That's okay, I can follow, I have enough sense that I can follow, and then I'll catch up.
All right, so, um, a, as, uh, I think they're loading it up so, so everyone can take a look, but this is in reference to NGL sixty point three, which was, uh, passed by legislature to address many of the disparities created by pre-COVID housing, economic and health crises faced by many veterans, um, you know, a, and, uh, please note that these issues have only been exacerbated by the CO, COVID pandemic amplifying the need for housing services, financial stability, and, and food assistance. With the, uh, with the housing issues, uh, not, not, not to get out of my lane, because it's not really my, my area of expertise, but I have seen over the last four or five years, uh, veterans falling into, uh, more need to help out with arrears and rent, um, and heating and electric issues, uh, for the expense, so the purpose is to create a comprehensive resource and support structure for our veterans in crisis, to be able to complement the already established state veteran services under Chapter 115, in added level of flexibility in serving our veterans outside of state restraints and requirements. All applicants have to complete standard state veteran services to verify their veteran status, each chair will have their own qualification, fund will be managed in unison with other similar already existing programs to avoid inefficiency, which is one of the questions they had before, uh, the council had about the, uh, sort of how it gets managed, we already have a current existing fund that, uh, they donate, uh, voluntarily, so instead of reinventing the wheel, I think it's, it shouldn't mirror a lot of the same processes internally to sit on. And when we look at the structure, I, I kind of think it's, it's just a, um, an attempt to, to, to give it, uh, a, a structure that, that try to make it, uh, is layman, i- is possible without getting a lot of technical jargon, but I, I divided it into four tiers, and obviously, they, they, they should all come in, any veteran in crisis should come in and apply for state veterans benefits, and see what we can get out of that first. And then, as we filter many of those veterans out, uh, like, for example, today, I, I, I got one of those, um, a, and they qualify for Tier One, so there's no need to even access Tier Two, Three, or Four, and the, the Tier Four, which is the sixty point three fund, that's sort of an unknown, we don't know, especially, uh, the, a lot of the research is showing that from the last stimulus payment, a lot of people held on to their money, they didn't go out and all those memes about buying this and buying that, many people are holding on to their money at the moment, so I can't really estimate, you know, uh, other than basing the eight thousand that they got from the school scholarship, what those funds would be a year from now, it might be two thousand, it might be three thousand, it might be five thousand, um, and then the Tier Three and, and Fourth, uh, funds, uh, was mentioned from the last meeting, and what had been, um, appropriated, oh, sorry, I, I apologize, like, I had the presentation over the speaker, oh, over the microphone, excuse me, uh, Tier One, which is the standard Chapter 115 emergency services, which helps with rental and utility arrears, unfortunately, the state, uh, policy only allows that as a one-time thing, so you can't come back every year and say you've fallen again behind in rent for two years, or three years, or five years, uh, so because of that, maybe there are some limitations, uh, emergency medical services are also limited, uh, for example, dental, um, some, a lot of insurances don't cover that, and a lot of people don't have dental insurance, uh, home repairs, clothing, a lot of these require a good amount of documentation, but I have been able to get the state to get, uh, to be flexible on those issues, and must qualify by income, which is two... They're eligible and their services will complement ours. So for example, if we only have two fifty to give to four veterans, we can refer them to CAPICAN and, and complement that. So that way it would be a more comprehensive package and, and more of an impact and a resource of help to the veterans. Now, food support services, one of the things that have come up every year is that families, um, who have a very tight budget and at that particular time of the year have to buy clothing and, and gifts for the children. Um, and the increasing expenses for food and, and other resources don't have necessarily enough money to get Thanksgiving food and like Christmas food. Um, and, and the turkey is actually some of the, the least expensive of that. Um, some of the other items are, the prices tend to go up in that, in that area. And, um, that's one of the support services that we can provide, but also requiring them to join our Veterans Food Bank, uh, which we have every month. And transportation services can support things like ambulance bills, MBTA ride, Charlie cards, especially for veterans that are looking for work. It'd be nice if we could help them out by getting them, uh, a card so that they can get to the interviews, get to the resource centers. Um, and, and those are just some of the suggestions, um, that, that I got. Uh, must qualify by income, three hundred percent of the FPL maximum. Must meet state definition of a veteran, must be a resident of the city. And then when we get to, excuse me, the Tier Three, which is the, the part that was mentioned as, as an appropriation, it opens it up a little more and that's just the recommended amount at the top. There, there's nothing set in stone. But, um, heating, fuel assistance, food support services and transportation. But it can also include other assistance like rental assistance, um, and, and clothing for children, uh, which comes up relatively often, or at least, uh, a few times a year. Um, and the qualification for that would be up to four hundred percent of the FPL. Does not necessarily have to meet the definition of a veteran that the, the, the federal government or the state, uh, dictate. Um, it must be a, a resident of the city. And then once we hit the Tier Four, it's the same items, but its residents can be above four hundred percent of the FPL. And everything's relevant. So when we look at someone who's forty percent of the FPL, that's roughly forty thousand dollars a year. That's not a lot for somebody who's past the living of their community where the, the expenses for rent, uh, are, are, are pretty significant. I mean, like I said, I don't like to go outside of my lane and, 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 and talk about numbers and stuff, but I, 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 my experience with the three hundred veterans that we're currently helping now and the many veterans that we've helped since two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, the impact of the cost of, of, uh, residing in the city, um, has been a difficult, uh, challenge, especially for, um, and that's pretty much it. The, the fund's management, I, I've mentioned before, it, it's, it's intended to just mirror the checks and balances that are already established with the school fund internally. Obviously externally, um, they're gonna have to qualify under various veteran statuses. So there'll never be funds for someone who was never a veteran or never wore a uniform in, in, in support of our, our, our great nation, but it expands the definition of, of, of a veteran, um, in, in support for, for our community.
Leo?
I would just add, there, there honestly is not much downside to this. We're just giving members of the committee opportunity to voluntarily donate to this fund. My sense from what we've been collecting from that Community Scholarship Fund is that you might get a few thousand dollars a year in donations, but every little bit helps and it gives residents an opportunity who want to support veterans to do so.
Leo?
Yeah, just, just briefly, cause I, I've spent, worked with Francisco and Tom on this and I think it's very appropriate for our community because we do have a large number of veterans who do see Francisco for services. And there are veterans who don't qualify for somebody assistance. And particularly those times during the winter where they might need fuel assistance or where they might need, uh, uh, Thanksgiving baskets or Christmas baskets. And this will be a mechanism of being able to go outside the box and be able to help provide for those families. And I think it's important that we support our veterans who have kind of put their lives on the line for us. And I think by approving this, um, honor will give us a chance to raise some money and be able to support some of the veterans that live in this community.
Counselor Cooper.
Mr. Ambrosino, this fund here, right, that, is that gonna be supported so by funds from people? Or the city's gonna contribute some to it?
So he did, he did in the last round of appropriations for FY twenty-one, he improved twenty-five thousand dollars sort of outside the Chapter 115 in first of count to give Francisco a member of that flexibility.
You said this one here will be a different fund?
It will be, it will be separately accounted for because it's donations from residents. It'll be separately held by the treasurer.
Or would it be?
But it will, it will create the same opportunity.
The question that I asked was, is it gonna be subsidized by us too?
So I would expect that you'll continue each year to contribute that twenty-five thousand dollars because honestly, I don't expect this to generate huge amounts. It just, it just doesn't. I mean, the reality is in three years with that Community Scholarship Fund, we've left it about eight thousand, so it's about, we're gonna get two or three thousand dollars.
So this is a good thing because it will give more opportunity to more veterans and it will contribute. So each year when we do this, or you come here, whoever's here, whatever counselor's here, right? When they do that, does this fund have to be appropriated each year or would it just be incorporated to the budget?
This particular fund will just operate independent of the appropriation. So it'll be money, it'll come in every quarter, it'll be under the control of the treasurer. Francisco will decide how it gets expected. It will, it will be perpetual once you-
Once it gets approved, it's there all the time.
Correct.
Okay, so, but what I understand Francisco's version is this will help veterans that don't qualify. They make too much money or whatever. So that would be the discretion of Francisco? Or does Francisco have guidelines himself where they say, okay, you can make sixty thousand and you can still qualify? Would it be, I know you said four hundred percent, and they go, go up to forty thousand. But I'm saying, what if a veteran comes to you and he makes eighty thousand and he still can't live? Would he still qualify?
Francisco has to establish according to the statute, the financial eligibility. So if he establishes, if he establishes it at four hundred percent of federal poverty level, then that will be the limit. And someone coming in who makes eighty thousand, which is more than four hundred percent, would not qualify.
I understand that, but it-
So he will have to set the requirements and publish them in some way so that everyone knows upfront what the qualification is.
I understand, but if, let's say for, for some unforeseen reason, you have a veteran that's working and he makes eighty thousand, but his expenditure is ninety thousand. So now here's a veteran in need and he can't qualify. So why do you have a cap? If it's Francisco's discretion, Francisco should decide himself if the veteran warrants making it, you know? But if you have a guy like, you turn around, he just said, your expenditure here, the rent is high. So the average person here needs to make more than forty thousand just to live here. So a lot of veterans that are making sixty thousand, seventy thousand, they're just struggling, let's say for say. And they won't qualify even with the four hundred like Francisco said. So there shouldn't be a limit on what a veteran should be able to get.
But he's got to create some eligibility standards and just publicize them. It could be a thousand percent of the federal poverty. Okay, that's- He can set it at whatever he wants, I expect, and Francisco concerned his speaker, he's gonna set it at where he sees the need as people come in.
It's a minimum.
He sees where the need is and he'll know where to set that down so we can meet that.
But I, but the point I was trying to make is Francisco establishes his need and some guy for some unforeseen reason makes more than that need. And by Francisco's standard, he doesn't qualify, but yet he's still in need.
And it may be that Francisco would need to adjust his eligibility.
Okay, that's what I was saying, so Francisco can adjust. Whenever he needs, he finds the, the necessity.
I think as long as he goes through a fair process of publicizing and developing the required requirements, he probably-
I believe this is a good thing. It's at least, it's giving veterans an opportunity to get something, like he said. It's, it's a good thing. I hope that the city funds it and contributes to it to have some sort of, but it should be eligible to all veterans, that's the point I'm trying to make. It should be eligible to all of them regardless. You know what I mean? If the necessity arises and that that poor guy for some unforeseen reason at that particular time, oh, you don't qualify, but yet he's still in need. It should be to your discretion or whoever's there handling to allow such a veteran to get something, even though he doesn't qualify at that particular time, but the need arises for him. So I, this is a good thing. It's a, it's, it's a, it's a great thing and I am supportive of this. As long as it meets that every veteran that's wants and needs it can get it. It shouldn't be, every veteran that needs it, Dr. Francisco's discretion, if he determines that such a veteran needs it, he should, he should get help.
So it does require a council vote to adopt the law?
It's okay, there's nothing wrong with adopting that. You're doing something good for both veterans that need help. Nothing wrong with it, there's nothing wrong with trying to give veterans who supported their country something in return. The whole thing I was trying to say is that there's a standard, four hundred this, there's a standard in everything. A certain time standard's gonna apply because self-for unforeseen reasons, things happen. And at that particular time, you don't qualify, but yet you still have a need. So what I want is a door to be opened where at least Francisco can make a decision on such a thing if it does arrive and if something like this does happen. That's the only thing that, that is, that I, I really want clarified. It, he, uh, even though here it says four hundred, a thousand, fifty thousand, whatever you make, but a certain time if something arrives that that person is in desperate need, but yet he still doesn't qualify under the monetary standard and he, and he needs it. Maybe Francisco, he can make his own choice and decide if he could, we could.
Yeah, definitely.
So, so whether it's bond or, you know, so, so in response, I, I, I think it's important to, to set guidelines. Some of the, some of these funds, like the actual MGL sixty point three, they set what the FPL is on that, so that's not something we can necessarily adjust. But there's other funds that we can. So the, the important part is to set up a comprehensive plan to try and cover as many as possible and, and keeping in mind that these guidelines are internal to the city and they can be modified when, when need be. And if, and, and the FPL has its own flexibilities as well. If it's a veteran with a spouse and let's say for example, a parent, which would fall under independent and two children, the, the there, the amount and the threshold will be much, much higher than a single veteran. But at the same time, we have to look at prac- standard practices with the law. Um, in Chapter 115, we don't deduct the child support portion that's taken out of the veteran's income because if we increase the benefit to cover what's taking out of child support, then in essence, the city is paying the veteran's child support.
But, but you said this fund, wait, excuse me for interrupting you. But you said this fund is a separate fund, it's separate from 115. It's a-
The same, the same guideline.
Yeah, but it's, it's not supplemented by-
But the guidelines can be set the same.
So if we set the same standard, is that, is that what you're saying for some or something?
He'll, he'll set some guidelines, but he gets more wiggle in going above, beyond those guidelines if need be on a case-by-case scenario.
Okay, so I, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. President, I understand. So in other words, we're gonna follow 115 with an additional, with an exception that if it arrives, you don't have to follow the strict guidelines of that. You're gonna follow your own standard and you're gonna set it. So this is my understanding, right? That you're not gonna go strictly by 115 because this is a separate fund from that. So you're gonna make changes and more or less when it arrives, maybe you'll do it.
Case-by-case decision, right.
Is that what, is that the way of doing it? Okay, so that's, that's, that's what I, I wanted to understand it. This is not, as you kept saying, 115. 115 is one, we add something different than 115. So we can change, you can modify what it is as, as the need arrives, right Roy? Is that, okay, this, that's fine, that's what I wanted to understand.
Think of it, think of it like a sifter. We start at 115, which is Tier One. If that doesn't do it, we go to Two. If that doesn't do it, we go to Three. And eventually through those four filters, we should grab ninety percent. And, and also too, whatever, you know, periodically we'll make adjustments, but it-
I understand, it's fair enough, it's good, I understand.
Counselor, uh, Brown and then, uh, Counselor Bejota.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll be brief. Uh, so if we pass this, um, if we run up this, um, is there, um, some kind of define of how residents can support it? How they, I mean, do you just mail a check in? Is there a limit how much you can give or how, how do we define it? Far, is it something we put in with a bill or something? How, how do we get the news out to the residents?
As previously mentioned, just like we do with the Scholarship Fund, it'll come in a bill, a notification that if you want to donate extra, you can do that and then you send a check in and that'll, that will be part of it. Uh, it'll be a notice on some of the bills that the city currently does, just like the scholarship program that we have in place right now. We can make a donation. We'll also set up a, a, a website. On there, we can set up a website for anyone who wants to make a donation to those, um, entities, whether it be the One Fund, the Scholarship Fund or the Veterans. We'll have a link on the website to anyone who wants to make a contribution or donation in any way, way.
So the website would, which is, that's where I was leaning to, uh, cause everyone pretty much don't get a lot of bills, uh, but they like to make contributions. And I just wanted to know if there was any other way that folks wasn't receiving bills, how can they be aware of making a contribution?
The, the, the website is the best way. I mean, other than a, a bill that they're gonna get, you know, the regular water bill and such.
Most renters don't get water bills.
No, but they get a, some, they, you get an excise tax. There's a lo- a lot of different bills that they get, an excise tax bill, they get a water bill, they get a property tax bill, uh-
So pretty much they're gone, so that's my answer. So pretty much they'll be going in all the bills that goes out.
Correct.
You'll get press release to, to, to adopt.
Counselor Bejota.
So just to clarify, this is before us because they, it needs our vote for adoption, but the details is at the discretion of, uh, Mr. Toro, correct?
That's correct.
All we need to do is vote to adopt it.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? None? Okay.
I got, I got one more question, Mr. President, Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
So, um, so there's a lot here that states resident. What about outside support? Um, would people outside of be able to make, um, donations?
Yes, again, anyone can make a donation. Uh, we'll have the website that, that people can make a donation to. Um, there'll be a press release- Um, there'll be a press release, um, and anyone familiar with, you know, I'm sure that the city manager has a conversation and someone says then, I'd like to make a donation to the veterans, how can I help? They can do that. Uh, I think that Francisco Toro can also work with the commandant and say, you know, if there's anyone who she's in touch with that wants to make a donation, they'll point her, you know, she'll point them in that direction. Uh, but there are outside entities that can make this sort of jump into.
Okay, I know this has been lingering for a long time. I remember when we had it on the floor, I believe Bob Bishop was here, so it's been a long time. So I'm glad we're about to wrap it up. Thank you.
Okay. All right, seeing no further business, that concludes tonight's meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.